Welcome to series one, episode four. This is an archive of live video Q and A streamed online. In this episode, I was delighted to be joined by Eve Rudehouse, Chief Officer for Economic Development, answering your questions on everything from business grants to rates relief, PPE to testing and business support, to how we as a region are going to recover from this. Enjoy. Welcome to the Johnny Ross Audio Experience. I'm Johnny Ross, founder and digital marketing strategist of Fleet Marketing. Each podcast, I'll be bringing you an expert to inspire you, to give you some great business growth takeaways, and to get you thinking about marketing and the bigger picture of how businesses can improve, adapt and grow. I look forward to sharing this with you on each podcast, so here we go. Hi, welcome to our video live Q and A this morning. I hope everyone is well. I'm Johnny Ross from Fleet Marketing. Today, we've got Eve Rudehouse. Would you like to welcome yourself? Tell us who you are, where you're from.
Sure. Hello, everybody. My name's Eve Rudehouse and I work for Leeds City Council. And at Leeds City Council, I lead on economic development.
And just to remind everyone, we're live streaming on YouTube. We are live streaming in the Facebook group, so we set up a Facebook group. Myself, Fleet Marketing and Virtual DCS set up an independent support group. It's the Coronavirus Yorkshire Business Support Group on Facebook. The idea is to help businesses get through this potential coronavirus chaos. Who knows what to ask, you know, are the experts giving the right opinions, et cetera? And we're here to help. And the idea is to bring experts like Eve in to help give us answers, to help, to show the support that we're getting. I've been blown away by how much the council has got involved and is giving that advice and support. And, and just making yourself so accessible. It's brilliant. How, Eve, how's it been for the last couple of weeks for you?
Oh, gosh, well, I think the, I consider week one to be the week when we were first told to work from home. And that was the week when we, as a council, flipped into emergency structures. So on the Monday morning, a number of us in the council met who were leading the different work streams around the emergency response. So you can imagine, we're obviously covering health, communities, business and economy, infrastructure and communications. So I'm just one of a number of people at the council leading on the emergency response at what we call in emergency structures, the silver level. So when we have emergency structures and they're in place across the whole country at the moment, you have something called Gold Command. And there's a Gold Command across each region. So there's one for West Yorkshire, one for North Yorkshire, and then obviously each area across the country. And then Leeds has its Gold Command, and then silver commands below that focused on particular areas. And so the first week was very, we were just setting up our emergency structures. And I know for everybody, that week felt kind of mental because it was literally one announcement after another in terms of implications for our personal and our working lives. So we were switching our teams to working from home and switching into emergency structures, while also dealing with, you know, our, you know, schools being shut and the implications for our families and dealing with all of that. So the first week was, was really challenging, just responding and making sure we were ready to support businesses, to be honest, like getting into our structures so we could support. But by week two, we started to feel much more confident about our ability to support businesses and respond. And that's when we were able to start setting up, as you say, some of the forums, which are meaning that we're able to stay in touch with business and to respond well. So we've got a couple of forums we've set up across Leeds, the Leeds Level One is with all the business representative groups. So some of you may or may not be familiar with groups like the Chamber of Commerce, the Federation of Small Businesses, Institute of Directors, and so on. But they, they come together with us once a week to sort of share intelligence. And that's been fantastic because it's, it gives us confidence in confirming what we're hearing back from businesses. And it's meant that collectively, we've been able to escalate issues that we've seen and heard nationally through our national networks, because a number of those organisations are very influential. And then one of the other groups we set up, which you've been part of, Johnny, is more focused on independents. And we've had a number of kind of representatives from the independent sector. And that initially, that was just really an offer to have a one-off session. But everybody really appreciated hearing from us and being able to help kind of us in terms of shaping our response. And so that's continued as well. And that's really, really positive, both for us in terms of helping us, but I think also for that community. And then finally, obviously, we're kind of working with the West Yorkshire Combined Authority and with the Local Enterprise Partnership across the whole of West Yorkshire and the Leeds city region on the emergency response. So we have regular kind of structured ways of working with them to make sure we're sharing all the best practices across all the councils, across the area. So that gives you a bit of an idea of the structures. And it took us kind of a week, two weeks to get all those structures in place. And we're now kind of working really well across all of those to, to be able to provide support in the best way that we can.
I've genuinely been so impressed with the speed that you've put things in place. It's, it's, it's very impressive. What I should say, by the way, for everyone, is that you can ask questions. If you feel free to ask questions, just put them in the comments. And also, if you're watching this on play, it would be good to know, maybe just put hashtag replay in the comments. We, there's also, you have a Leeds City Council have a podcast, Leeds in Conversation. This potentially will be on the podcast, if you're listening to the podcast, hello, welcome. And, but if, either way, you should search for the podcast, Leeds in Conversation for future podcasts as well. So going away from the current crisis and COVID, I just want to try and find out a tiny bit more about your role, because I think that will help us get a bit more of a picture on, on how, on where you play in the current crisis, if you see what I mean. So just, just going back a step, what, what's your, how do you typically collaborate with the wider communities in the Leeds city region? And what's your, what's your role at the council?
Yeah, sure. So as I said, I lead on economic development, but that's very broad. So I have quite a range of responsibilities in my portfolio at the council. So one of my teams is responsible for promoting Leeds as a, as a destination for tourism. So for both business and leisure tourism. And we've actually just relaunched our website for that. Not the best timing in terms of people being able to come and visit the city, but it is going to be useful timing for when we want to re-energise people to come, come back into Leeds tourism. And I also lead on international relations. So we have long-term relationships with cities all over the world, including Hangzhou in China, who have been incredibly generous in terms of the response to coronavirus. They donated 10,000 masks, which arrived this week to support, to support us. And we, I also sort of, as kind of in, in normal times, I'm also responsible for business support. So I have a team who are commissioned on behalf of the whole city region to deliver a couple of programmes, which I know, Johnny, you've supported and are continuing to support, which is the adventure programme, which supports businesses that are three years and younger, and digital enterprise, which is a great programme that provides support to businesses that want to adopt digital schemes. So we, in effect, are a host organisation for staff that deliver those business support services across the city region. And we provide some specific business support in Leeds. I also have a economic policy team. And sort of normally, our economic policy team are kind of very focused on sort of sector development. So in the city, in Leeds, we have done a lot of work to support the digital economy over the last few years. So you will, you may have noticed that we sponsor the Leeds Digital Festival. We support North Invest, which is an angel investors network, and Fintech North. Those are all things that we do to support the development of digital, the digital sector and entrepreneurs. And we do quite a lot of that type of activity on, on an ongoing basis. One of, one of the kind of most important things, however, that me and my team have been responsible for at the council is around our inclusive growth strategy and the implementation of that. So in 2018, in July 2018, we published that inclusive growth strategy. It was set about making it clear that we're not just interested in growth, for growth's sake, in terms of economic growth in Leeds. We recognise that there is an increasing inequality gap between the richest and the poorest in our city. And we have some of the 10% most deprived areas in the city, in the country. And so the whole purpose of the inclusive growth strategy was to set out how we would make sure that actually those communities felt the benefits of economic growth just as much as everybody else. And interestingly, I think, you know, we're probably seeing some of those fault lines really clearly in, in the impact of COVID-19 on some of the people across our city. And so as we start to switch into thinking about recovery, which we're doing some early thoughts about at the moment, we absolutely need to have at the heart of that, this principle of inclusive growth. And how do we rebuild our economy in a way that supports, you know, everybody that, that lives in our city in an equal way in terms of going forwards? So that's kind of a bit of a, bit of an overview of my portfolio.
I mean, it's great. I mean, it demonstrates how plugged in you really already are with businesses and the, and the community and, and what you're driving for. And I unfortunately believe that this crisis is only going to widen that gap, that, that, that economic gap. And that, that does worry me and it is concerning. But, but what's good to hear is that that's been on your agenda for, for a couple of years as a minimum. And so, you know, hopefully, we're, we're ready for that in some way. And as you say, as part of the recovery, that's, that's one of the big focuses. So we've, we've, we've got, as I said, you can ask questions. We had someone, someone that couldn't wait, can't see your name. If you're on Facebook, I can't see your name or your, or where you're from, but feel free to put that in. Got someone saying hi there. Morning guys from Jeremy Harris at Alan Cook, letting's and sales and lettings, doing a great job. And we've got some, a couple of quick questions as well. We might just do a couple of quickfire questions. One nicely leads us into our next question anyway. So very excited about this. Wants to know what the, what the council, I guess, are going to do to help support retail that don't have bricks and mortar premises, but sell at council markets? I mean, that's a really difficult one, isn't it? It's a, you know, small businesses. I do know, having been involved in some of the conversation already, that, that you are thinking about how you're going to reignite some of that. It, it, it's an early stage though, isn't it?
Yeah, definitely. I mean, I suppose first of all, on markets, some, you know, tenants in markets do actually pay some, some rates and so are potentially eligible for grants. So it's not the case that, sort of in, in the market context, that everybody won't have access to those, those grants. I do recognise the constraints around the, the grants in terms of being connected to business rates. But for those of you that follow their daily press briefings, you'll have, you'll have heard the Chancellor last night talking about the fact that part of the reason why they've used the rates kind of mechanism is about reducing fraud. So whilst it has its imperfections, it does help kind of protect that, that piece around fraud. And yeah, in terms of kind of some of those shortcomings, we, we have kind of obviously heard from people who are in sort of shared office work spaces, for example, places like Avenue HQ that people might know in Leeds or, or Coast Base North. And the fact that because they don't pay rates, they may not be kind of therefore kind of getting rates relief or getting the grants. So we are in sort of dialogue nationally. Our, our chief execs are, at local authorities are plugged right into central government in terms of feeding back. And those feedback loops are working. And we are kind of saying, could we have some discretion at local government level in terms of any money that's remaining from that money which has been allocated for grants and so on? And at this stage, there are no plans for that. I must say that, there are no plans. And the financial position for local government is dire, just as much as it is for many businesses. We've had seen our income drop considerably too. So we're not in a position where we can suddenly rustle up money ourselves, but we are raising nationally around that. Now, just, yeah, to the point about retail and re-engaging, one of the things that we've been talking about already, just early recovery thoughts is clearly when people have been spending a lot of time at home and it's been drilled into them that, you know, you keep your distance from people. We need to reignite people's kind of desire to want to go back into public spaces. So early conversations across city partners about how we might do that with some kind of festival of shopping or similar to reinvigorate our town and city centres, to get people back out there to retail environments and so on.
So, so yeah, we, we're sort of accepting that there are gaps. I'm in one of those gaps myself. And, but at the same time, the council is trying to see how they could plug those gaps, but also thinking of initiatives to sort of reignite and, and bring something to those businesses afterwards, which is, is good to hear. Someone else just saying hello, hello to you. So got another question here, which leads us into, because what I wanted to know was a bit more about the business grants. There's two different grants, aren't there? I'm not sure you know the answer to this question. I don't want to put you under the deep end, but are there any grants for businesses of ratable value of 153K? I don't know the answer to that, do you, Eve? If you don't, it's fine.
So it depends on the nature of your business, though, if it's like hospitality, retail and hospitality. And then you, you're getting a rates relief holiday for 12, for 12 months. Sorry, you're getting rates relief for 12 months and that's automa, being processed automatically. So it's kind of depends on the nature of the business in terms of the nature of support. So there are the 10K grants, 25K grants, but there's also rates relief holidays being applied. At the council, we've applied the rates relief holidays automatically to the eligible businesses. And again, for the 25K grants where people are eligible, and we have their details, we're processing that effectively. They, well, my, my, my recommendation to people that are listening, if they're not sure whether they qualify or not, is to look at your council's website. So if you are Leeds-based, take a look at our business page. And I'm sure Johnny can put in the comments the, the link to that later. And you can look on there, it gives you all the information about the gra, the grants that are available. If you are not in Leeds, because I know this has got a wider audience, all the other local authorities have got similar webpages on their websites. And the local authorities are the ones that are dealing with the grants and the rates relief. So take a quick look there and you'll be able to, thanks Johnny, you'll be able to see there what the eligibility is for you. And most councils like ours, so our rates relief team are just incredible, sorry, our rates team are incredible. We got the money from central government last Thursday. They have been processing payments since Friday last week. They worked all weekend, they're going to work this weekend. They've so far processed 3,550 grants, which amounts to 51.55 million pounds that is going out to these businesses. And we know that businesses are desperate for this cash to keep them going because some of the schemes like furlough don't come in place till the end of the month. And, and obviously, self-employed options don't come in place till later in the year. So just really kind of incredible effort from, from them trying to get that through. The payments do take like three days through backs. So businesses should start seeing payments coming through. And, and Leeds City Council isn't alone on that. There are teams all across local government that are putting the hours in to try and make sure that this money gets to businesses to help them survive.
And, and I think the figures are brilliant as to how much you've paid out already. And, and like we've already discussed, there are some businesses that, that haven't contacted you yet, but you do have plans in place to try and find them and get the money to them at some point if they, if, you know, some of them might not even be aware they're eligible.
Yeah, that's, that's right. We're not, yeah.
All I was going to say was you're categorically going to be paying them, aren't you?
Yeah, we're not, we're not writing letters out to people because what we don't, we've, where we've got addresses for premises, obviously, people are not going into those premises necessarily. And we don't want to encourage people to go to their premises when we're, we're all, you know, got guidance to stay at home. But national government have given us a tool, which will help us identify businesses, don't, don't proactively get in touch. Because for the small rates, for the small grants, we don't tend to have bank details for those businesses. So on the webpage that Johnny highlighted, we are asking those small businesses to give us their bank details. And again, most local authorities are doing the same. So if you're not from Leeds and you're listening to this, then your, then your local authority will probably have something similar on their webpage.
Great. There was just someone asking, are they being paid in any order at all? They've put their claim in but not received it yet. I guess you're just going through them as fast as you can.
I think that's the answer, yeah. We process them as quickly as we can. We did do the fir, we did do, do the first lot of kind of grants where we had bank, bank details and people were rate payers at the back end of last week. And we're just kind of working through them as quickly as we possibly can. So please bear with us and we will try and make sure that money arrives as quickly as possible.
Yeah, okay. I mean, you, to be fair, you only received the money, I think, on the first or second of April, you tells, is that correct?
Yeah, it kind of arrived Thursday last week. And I'm proud to say as well that Robert Jenrick from MHC L G did give Leeds a shout out for being one of the councils that was getting the money out as quickly as possible. And so quite proud of that one, really.
We've got Shelley watching, some other people saying hi. In fact, if you're on Facebook, I can't see your name, so feel free to put your names in the comments. But if you do have questions, please do ask. As I said, we're live on, streaming on YouTube and in the Facebook group, which is the Coronavirus Yorkshire Business Support Group, and potentially on the Leeds City Council Podcast, Leeds in Conversation. So just wanted to ask, the NHS, you know, what, how does the council fit with the NHS? Where are you, how, how are you supporting, what, what's the conversation?
Yeah, so the council is working like hand in hand with the NHS through the emergency structures. So clearly, I'm personally not heavily involved in that area, but I can tell you some of the things that we've been doing together. So there's been an unprecedented, unprecedented amount of collaboration between social care and the NHS. So at the beginning, you know, a few weeks back, our social care team were bulk buying beds in care homes, for example, to be able to help the hospitals release beds for a potential surge in patients around coronavirus. So that's, you know, one example of an area where we've been working together. But the council's also playing like a huge role in terms of protecting some of the shielded individuals. So these are the people that have been asked to stay at home for three months and not leave their homes to protect themselves. And we're trying to ensure that those shielded individuals get the support they need in terms of access to food. And that's being coordinated through our fantastic volunteer structures, which voluntary action leads have been helping to coordinate across the city. And we've had a tremendous response. And if anyone that, that would like to volunteer, if you go to Doing Good Leeds, that's where you can volunteer to help with these efforts. So there are, I mentioned sort of emergency structures earlier on. There's kind of regular meetings every day, ongoing across health and care, looking at where the issues are and making sure we respond to them. So Johnny, you and I were talking about PPE briefly. So that's an example of actually where business and the economy have been helping. So everyone will have picked up this piece about personal protective equipment and a general shortage across the country. And just to give people a bit of a kind of sense of that, we use around 33,000 masks a week. You know, and that's, you know, that's the council. So you're looking at, and there are, if you think, if you just start to think about it, you've got organisations like St Gemma's Hospice, you've got dentists, you've got funeral directors, you've got social care workers going into people's homes, you've got care homes, and then you've got all the NHS as well, really needing all of this equipment. So the demands on the supply chain are huge. National government are trying to ensure we get a supply, but we, we've taken decision locally that we need to open up as many supply lines as we possibly can for PPE. So we've been using our contacts through our key accounts at Leeds. So we, so we keep in contact with sort of around 130 businesses that have high, that employ a large number of staff on a regular basis. And we've reached out to some of those that we believe might be able to help us. We've reached out to some of that, we've got a high number of health and health-based companies across Leeds. So we've reached out to some of them to see if they can help us through supply lines as well. And, and that's, that's an ongoing piece of work to try and make sure that we can address that. We're also following up with Hangzhou, who I mentioned earlier, around suppliers in China and whether we can bring more in there. But that's, so that's an example of where the contacts we have through business and the economy become really valuable in a public health emergency and how we're working together in emergency structures in a way we probably wouldn't normally.
That's, it's, I mean, it's great. And, and just to recap and remind, this isn't just, you know, you're not just seeing this as Leeds City Council and Leeds, but actually you collaborate with the Leeds city region through a number of partners on a regular basis. And, and the idea is there's a ripple effect here across the, the regions, that's correct?
Yeah, absolutely. So my team join regular meetings with the West Yorkshire Combined Authority so that we can share our knowledge and understanding across other authorities. And we can work with one another. But also, the Local Enterprise Partnership are providing the first port of call for businesses across the region. So they, that's the first place people should go if they want a conversation with somebody about rounded business support. And that's anything that's been announced by the government in terms of, you know, the business interruption loan or, or other areas. And they're looking for some guidance and some signposting. The Local Enterprise Partnership are providing that support to Leeds-based businesses and businesses across our region. And we then work really tightly with them. And we do that normally as well, actually, because I, one of the areas I forgot to mention earlier that I work on is inward investment and we work really closely with colleagues at the Local Enterprise Partnership on that. And so those relationships that we have in kind of normal, as it were, times are really helpful now as well in terms of maximising the resources across the public sector to support businesses at this time.
And, and, and yeah, what you're suggesting is that the, the big signpost here is for any business at all, needing any kind of support whatsoever, even if it's just a listening ear or to answer a question or to try and get some kind of direction. The side, the big signpost is go to the LEP.
That's right.
And I've put the, the web address on there for people that, that can see. But if you just go to the-lep.com for those listening and, and click on the coronavirus link, what you're saying is that they can then triage and put people into the right places. There, there's so many programmes in place that, that have been going on behind the scenes. And, and that's great. I think we're just getting some controversy on whether the supply chain is working. So I'm not working for PPE, I have a client with surgical grade masks and gloves stuck in a warehouse as all our customers are shut. Can I send contact details? Yeah, I mean, some of this, you know, comes down to priorities as well. And how do you, how do you, how do you prioritise who gets masks and when? You know, that's a difficult one, but Eve has an answer for that.
You can absolutely pass on details on Johnny, if we kind of, we might need to do that by DMs. But I'm sure Johnny can get those to me. We've got, we do have resources in the council to go and collect any items of PPE if people do have items in the, you know, in a warehouse that they want to get to the NHS or all the council in terms of making a contribution to that. So we, we can pick that up.
That's brilliant, okay.
And agreed, it's not working brilliantly. That's why we're trying to help solve, yeah.
We've got Nikki May watching, great interview so far, thank you guys. So you've talked about how you're working with other authorities and the NHS. Let's talk about the police. How do you work with the police?
Yeah, so West Yorkshire Police are very much part of the emergency structures. So they're part of what we call the Gold Command. So when I talked about the structures, so they're part of those meetings and meet on a regular basis. And there was an issue that cropped up actually in one of our calls that sort of related to here as well, which was around businesses being concerned about premises that were being left empty and whether they'd be secure and so on. And, and because of the emergency structures, we were able to sort of escalate that through. And West Yorkshire Police were able to provide some kind of assurances about their approach to kind of patrolling during this time and, and what they're doing around that. So it, it works really well having these emergency structures because something that arises in one area like economy and business can then be passed on and we can get answers. Just on that topic, a quick tip for people who are listening. If you do have business premises and they are currently empty, make sure you check your insurance policy because you might not be covered after a certain period of time if those premises are left empty. So you might want to just check what your eligibility is and perhaps contact your insurance company for a conversation around that.
That's great, okay. And there's a, there's a lot of, you know, anxiety, a lot of concern, a lot of businesses falling into gaps. But at the same time, there's a lot of positive stories. And I think it's really important that we reflect on some of those. And, and as a, and as a, a region, a, an area of the country, I think we've got some, some really good stories. Do you want to share some of those with us, Eve?
Yeah, so before I do that, I think, Johnny, yeah, kind of, I don't mean these positive stories to be trite. I really do understand that there are people in desperate kind of situations. But one of the positive things that, that we should sort of hold on to around Leeds and the city region is that we have a really broad-based economy. And that stood us in really good stead after the 2007, eight recession in terms of how we recovered. And so we'll share some of these stories in terms of giving, you know, some, some little green shoots in terms of understanding what's going on. So one example is a business called Harida Healthcare. Based in Leeds, they produce mattresses, medical-grade mattresses. They received a massive order from NHS Nightingale for production of those mattresses. And subsequently, their, their order book amounts to the same value as their entire turnover from last year currently in the production of mattresses, which is phenomenal. And they're working round the clock to deliver those mattresses. And they've also been able to support another business who was looking to potentially close down, who produce uniforms, who are now producing mattress covers for them based in the, the region. So that's a really positive bit of news. There's a business in Leeds called Sir Fiskins that actually is a spin-out of Leeds University. There's a business in Leeds called Surface Skins that actually is a spin-out of Leeds University, who, they produce self-sanitising door pushes and door handles. And so they have seen a massive surge in demand. So that's when, you know, when you push on a door handle, obviously, typically, everyone will have noticed this when you were still at work. I kept thinking, how am I meant to get out of this toilet without touching the door handle? Because all toilet doors open inwards. I suddenly noticed it all. So, so Surface Skins, if you were touching that door handle, any kind of bacteria that you've left on that door handle would, would go because it, that, that's the technology in place. So they've received a grant from the, from the local enterprise partnership to help them respond to demands. That's a really fantastic kind of news story. Brandon Medical, another sort of medical-based company have been responding with the production of, they produce kind of bits of medical equipment. So their order books also been busy in terms of responding to COVID-19. And they were able to help through their supply chain, secure 45 ventilators for Leeds Teaching and Sales Trust. So another really fabulous positive story. And then probably in the other side of kind of a few different examples away from health and care. Many of you might have come across Pan Intelligence, their brilliant kind of digital business led by Zandra Moore. And they, their business is continuing, but on outside of their kind of normal business, they've offered support to the public sector and in response to COVID-19, which is phenomenal. And last week, Zandra was able to respond to a call out from voluntary action leads to help with their payroll systems that they had an issue with. So big shout out to them. And then Leeds Indie Food. Some of you might have been to some of the Leeds Indie Food events over the last few years. They're just brilliant in terms of some of their chow downs that they do and the Leeds Indie Food Festival. And they've, their response has been fabulous. They've pivoted their events page to show indies that are open and still doing delivery and added in their businesses that aren't necessarily just about food. So really supporting that indie community and they've got some merchandiser promoting to try and support the indie sector. They've brought together a brilliant magazine, which they're going to launch digitally and, and hopefully in print, which we're going to support them with from Leeds City Council. So a few, few examples there of some positive things that are coming out of this. I guess, oh yeah, the other one that if people haven't picked up Burberry have done, done quite a lot as well. So they changed their supply chain at their Castleford factory to start producing masks and and other PPE equipment, which is quite a thing. And they're also funding a research into a vaccine at Oxford University. And there are, there are other stories from bigger businesses donating to the, donating to charity and the cause. So Direct Line Group have made a substantial, substantial donation to Leeds Community Foundation. So the, the business sector is really kind of stepping up in that respect as well.
Yeah. And, and, and there's also, you're supporting Next Up, who are doing a mentoring programme. That's right, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah.
500 mentors, any business, freelancer, self-employed can sign up to a free platform and tap into 500 mentors to get an hour weekly session, whether it be to have a listening ear, to ask for some advice, to be able to redress your position or re, or relook at your business. So there's, there's so much support and help out there. And, and it's just, again, amazing to see that the council are being so accessible and, and trying to, to, to signpost in all these different areas. So thank you.
That's good. Yeah. No, Victoria's, Victoria Thompson behind Next Up. We were doing, we were planning an event for the Leeds Digital Festival. And we just had a conversation as we went into the emergency level, can we flip that round and do something that responds to the emergency? So that's a great initiative for all focused on sort of wise heads, supporting entrepreneurs. And it's just, it's got a double whammy effect really of also providing purpose for kind of some of those, some of those people that might be at home that have got all that experience to share with entrepreneurs as much as it's a support for entrepreneurs. So really encourage people to take a look at that campaign. As I said, Wise Heads for Young Shoulders, Next Up. And kind of sign up to that as an entrepreneur and or mentor to gain, to gain sort of access to some really quite brilliant people in that.
And, and it's also about supporting the, the sort of Leeds institutions, the, the jumbo records and the Broodanil Social Clubs. You know, Leeds Markets, for example, they're all involved in this conversation and we just would not, not want to lose some of these Leeds institutions.
Absolutely not. And I think we, we kind of, as we've moved away from sort of more of a firefighting stage in the council, one of the things that we are trying to do is reach out to some of those strategically important organisations. So you mentioned a few there, but I'd add to that places like Shine in Hair Hills and Dawn, who runs Shine, that is really struggling with the situation because obviously they do hospitality and conference facilities there and they're not able to do that. So we obviously kind of reached out to organisations like that that are really going to be really, really important in terms of making sure that the recovery that we have is inclusive. So we are now trying to make sure that we reach out to those organisations who we've worked with over several years to make sure that they are still going to be there when we come through this in terms of being able to support businesses and communities through the recovery.
Just to remind people, if they do want to ask questions, please do, and we will see if we can answer them. The government's announced aid for charities. They announced 750 million last night. I don't know if, if we have any opinion on that. I mean, is this going to be enough for our region? What percentage are we going to get? Who's eligible? Loads of questions. I don't think there's answers yet, are there?
No. I mean, usually when we see these announcements and we, we felt this really hard over the first two weeks, announcements are made and then the detail follows. So I think we'll probably want to scrutinise the detail and see how that's going to really work for charities. But I mean broadly, very, we welcome it for sure because certainly, as I said, we, we've been sort of actually, you know, gathering where the gaps are and issues. And one of the gaps that was really highlighted was a lack of support for charities because charities don't qualify for this business grant because it's not kind of something that's been set up for them. But charities are playing a huge role in the response to COVID-19. So right across Leeds, we are really blessed with a whole load of kind of community-based charities. You know, so if you think about organisations like Holbeck Together, who are just absolutely central to making sure that we're supporting families that rely on preschool meals, families that are now finding themselves destitute because they might have been on zero hours contracts and suddenly they don't have any support at all. So they're relying on the state in terms of applying for universal credit. And we've heard some dreadful stories about people that have been on the line to DWP for literally hours trying to get through. We don't, that's not a criticism of DWP. You know, DWP have had, as I understand it, they've diverted all the resources that they can that have had experience of dealing with applications onto this. They're training people up to cope with it and they're working through their backlog across West Yorkshire and they're, and they're making progress. So totally actually, big shout out to DWP for doing that. But, and you know, they were never probably set up to deal with such a huge surge of people having to rely on universal credit. So, you know, that, those, those charities, you know, whilst people are in those kind of desperate moments are really, really important because they are kind of already connected in the communities and they're already working out there. So the support announced yesterday is vital and really welcomed. I guess the test for us as we look into it will be how much of that is going to get to some of those small charities and how quickly. So that, because again, the, the issues they're facing are the same as businesses, you know, can they pay their staff? Can they pay their rent? You know, it's, it's the same, same issues, just a different sector in terms of the, you know, the implications for them.
So someone was just asking for details for the next up. I'm just going to flash the link for that in a moment. Also, any help for businesses such as hairdressing or within a gym rates not paid as, as all included? I'm not sure. Businesses within a gym rates not paid as all included. Can you decipher that? And give us that, I'm not sure.
Yeah. So hair, hairdressing businesses, if you've got premises, then you will be eligible for a business grant. So just kind of bear that one in mind. I think in terms, and again, sort of if you're self-employed, then take a look at the schemes that are available for self-employed. And I, it's like kind of, for those of you that haven't looked at what Martin Lewis is doing, he's like a one-man kind of civil servant, public service at the moment. He's doing some absolutely brilliant videos and his website is great in terms of getting advice. So if you are self-employed and you're thinking, what's the right thing to do and how should I do this? There's some really great advice on the Martin Lewis website in terms of, you know, the, the schemes there and the position and who's in, who's out and what, what to do. And on the kind of, just again, sort of going into recovery, one of the things that we started to have a bit of a think about and talking about in our forums is, you know, how is this lifting of lockdown going to work? You know, how will we kind of see different kind of sectors kind of possibly seeing things lifted before others and how might that work? And there are no answers to this at the moment. But I think the consensus is that any lifting in lockdown needs to be done consistently across the whole country. We don't want to see any kind of different differences geographically because that might create a kind of real disadvantage to particular areas of the country if they're behind the curve in COVID-19 compared to, to others in terms of cases. So, you know, we'll, we'll be giving this quite a lot of thought and influencing central government around this through our networks and with other business representative organisations over coming weeks.
You've, you've talked about, so, so let's go for recovery because you've just brought it up. I was going to bring it up anyway. But, you know, yeah, okay. So, so when are we, when are we going back out? When does business open? When do schools reopen? Correct me if I'm wrong, the way you're thinking about this is that you've got to consider schools first. You've then got to think about childcare provisions and, and you need data as well, don't you?
Yeah.
So what's the sort of data that we need to be thinking about?
Yeah. So I should probably stress that it'll be, it'll be central government that will obviously make the decisions about lifting of lockdown. What we're doing is making sure that our voice is heard about our thoughts on that through the forums that we've set up in Leeds. And we're feeding that then through the emergency structures I've talked about, so that our voice is heard in that, in that piece. And what we've heard, asking people for their opinions, is that clearly childcare has to be resolved primarily because as long as schools are, it's got a closed and childcare provision is closed, that's going to be a major break on the economy anyway. So that, that needs to be resolved first. At a kind of, at a, at a local level, at the Leeds and the Leeds City Region level, one of the things that we're really, really focused on at the moment is thinking about the data that we need for a strong recovery, as you say, Johnny. So anyone that knows a little bit about economics and data that we have around economics, the, the kind of data that we normally rely on takes a very long time to come through. So if you rely on employment numbers and you rely on GDP, gross domestic product, all of those things have a really long time lag in terms of telling you what's going on in the economy. So actually what we're going to need to be able to respond effectively is much more real-time data about what's happening in the economy. So we are probably going to push some colleagues around whether we can get access to data that's collected by the parts of governments faster and look at, it's very early stages, but expect us to be reaching out to some of our brilliant experts across the city like ODI Leeds and others, who are already, so ODI Leeds are already doing some brilliant work. If you look at what they're doing around their COVID-19 mapping, they've got these hex maps. They did a brilliant job during the election. And if you look, they're doing that now for COVID-19 to show the spread. And they ongoing have done loads of brilliant work through ODI Leeds around things like planet data, which is their response to climate change. So we will be having to look at how we can gather data like that because if you think about unemployment, for example, just, you know, sorry to kind of be kind of thinking about something quite negative, but a lot of businesses have furloughed staff for now. But we, we don't know how this is going to play out in terms of recovery. And when those businesses go back, some of those businesses might be in a position where actually they don't necessarily need all the staff they furloughed. And we could see sort of unemployment in some sectors at a later stage. But we could see other sectors actually recovering really well. So Johnny, you and I are quite networked into the digital sector. The digital sector, I think, are very well placed to actually bounce back quite quickly from this. They're all very used to working remotely and they've got all the tools for working remotely. And many of them are actually at the heart of the response in terms of how they're supporting businesses responding. So I think there'd be quite a lot of resilience in that sector and that they will bounce back quite quickly, which could then see a demand for people with skills in the digital side of things. So at a council and regionally, what we'll be then interested in is understanding where those demands might be and those skills might be, so that we can really support people to build up those skills that, that can then get into those jobs having left other parts of the, having left other parts of the labour market. And the other big area we're going to need to think about and we need data on is our young people. You know, if some of those kind of jobs in retail go, a lot of young people do start their, you know, their, their jobs in that area. A lot of, even people that graduate actually sometimes spend some time working in retail and hospitality before they go into another sector. And we need to make sure that actually there are jobs there for young people as they come out of school and they come out of university and avoid, and avoid a massive kind of youth unemployment issue. So early days, getting our heads around all of those things, but really needs deep thought and proper coordination. So we will be getting our heads into all of that over the next weeks and months.
But, but what's so pleasing to hear is that all of this is being thought about and, and conversations are being had to try and support us all to, to recover. And, and you know, that is very much appreciated. And I think it's so important that, that everyone listening and watching hears that, how the council are, are being proactive. Just going back, the person that was talking about the hairdressing, what she was saying, what she or he was saying was that they are, they don't pay rates because they're within a gym, that they, they rent a room.
Oh, I see, yeah.
So, so I guess the answer to that, you've already given about the self-employed, but also what my, my advice, we've set up a Facebook group, Coronavirus Yorkshire Business Support Group, to answer these questions. There's already people asking the same questions in there. If you can't find the answers, just ask the question again in there. And there's so many people in there that will give you some, some solid answers. And, and, you know, and, and there are gaps and, and, and we realise, but we've also got some, some strategies to help you get through. So, I mean, this has been a fascinating interview. Thank you so much. I don't know if there's anything else, any other message you wanted to get across from the, from the council?
Yeah. I mean, I think, I think where I'd finish is just about saying, look after your mental health and seek help if you are struggling. So, you know, whether your business is doing okay and you've kind of found a way to pivot and to operate in this or whether it's not okay, we've, we've all kind of got struggles at the moment in terms of working from home and the sort of constraints around that. And many of us might, you know, some of us might be at home on our own. Some of us might have children we're trying to look after. Some of us might have somebody that we're shielding. And we might be worried about kind of elderly parents on top of them worrying about our businesses, worrying about, you know, employees, what the future holds. And so I would just finish by saying, you know, please do reach out for help if you're struggling from a mental health point of view. And we are going to put out some information over today through the Leeds City Council channels about where you can access support for your mental health locally and nationally. Because obviously we're going into a long weekend when, you know, levels of activity will reduce. So I think that would be my final message, which would be just look out for each other and look out for yourselves and kind of do ask for help if you need it in terms of your mental health, not just your physical health. That's obviously been, you know, been at the primary focus of this emergency.
Absolutely. And, and someone just commented that the, the young people need the most support. And I, and I sort of think that they probably will be the most affected age group where, where, you know, they've probably not gone through, you know, some of us have gone through the 2008. Some of us are older and have gone through bigger things. But yeah, the, the younger, the younger age group does worry me. But it's, but yeah, mental health is absolutely on the agenda. And in fact, it leads nicely on to, we have, next week, we've got three live Q and As. So we've got one on video and how to make the best use of video. But, but more importantly, mental health, we've got Harry Bliss from, I think it's called Champion Health. Got some amazing resources that he's putting out to help employees right now. And we've also got a finance Q and A next week as well. But yeah, it, it, really, really pertinent because we've got the bank holiday weekend, weekend coming up. We've got, you know, we're, we're in isolation. It's, you know, you need, people need to talk, people need to ring each other. People need to unfortunately get on social media. It's, sometimes it's the worst place, but, but, but ironically, it's somewhere for help at the moment. Yeah, I, I think we could talk for hours, but I am so appreciative. Thank you so much for your time. And, and, and actually you're meant to be off today. So you were, you agreed to working this morning. I think you're off this afternoon.
Yeah, taking some time for myself as well. But no, thank, thank you, Johnny, for inviting me because it's a real pleasure to be able to just share a bit about what's going on in the council so that people are aware that we're there for you and that we're working. and so that people are aware that we're there for you and, and that we're working as hard as we can to make sure that we can do all that we can.
And the conversation has not stopped. If you have questions, ask. We all have ways to, to get to the council and ask these questions for you. So, so please do continue this conversation afterwards. Thanks so much and we will see you soon. Have a safe weekend and stay at home. See you all soon. Bye from me.
Take care.
You've been listening to the Johnny Ross Audio Experience. Thanks so much for joining me. If you want to continue the conversation, head over to my website, fleet dot marketing, or find me on LinkedIn. That's all for today. Please subscribe wherever you listen to podcasts, tag me in your social media posts and please leave me a review on iTunes. It will make a huge difference for me. I will see you soon.